I was telling the chief.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting June 2nd, 2014, 6:00 P.M. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do, unless maybe you thought it was at 6:30, but. I have a couple announcements. The police fishing tournament, 14th Annual Fishing Derby, I guess, is going to be on 6/7/14 with registration starting at 7:45. No fishing licenses are needed. The prize will be awarded in various categories. This is for children 14 and under. For more information, you can probably go to the Police Department website. So again, that is on 6/7. What's 6th June? That's this weekend.
Yes, it is.
Nothing gets by me. Next, we have some vacancies on some town boards. I believe we appoint our next meeting on June 9th for people, for reappointments, which if you are interested in a reappointment, please, you've received an email or you've received a letter, please return it. But the following boards and committees have some vacancies, so if something catches your interest, please, you can email Town Hall, you can call the Selectmen's office, or I think you can go to the Tom Andrews page under the website. It has different things you can click on. I actually was just on there last night. Vacancies are Cable Advisory, Abington CAM Board of Directors, Community Development Advisory Committee, Housing Partnership, Memorial Field Improvement Committee, Open Space Committee, and Sage, Saving Abington Through Green Energy. There are openings on those boards, so if you're interested in those or if you're interested in something else, please do not hesitate to email AbingtonMA.gov. We have on our agenda tonight an executive session. If it's agreeable to the board, I'd like to put that off towards the end of the meeting just so we have all members of the board here. Okay, great. I think this meeting is kind of a special meeting. We wanted to finish discussing our articles for the town meeting, and I think we've already voted on the budget, but I believe we want to talk about some of the articles that we didn't finish. And I know Maureen was unable to make the last meeting. I don't know if Maureen has any questions or any concerns over some of our votes. They will, they basically fall in line with what the Finance Committee recommended, I believe, for the most part. Let's see, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, because I am wrong quite a bit. Let's see. Hold Article 4, Elected Official Salary for the Town Clerk. We're going to hold that.
Right, and since your last meeting, the Finance Committee has met and they have voted to recommend approval of that, that's about a 4% increase for the elected position of Town Clerk. As you know, those have to be specifically approved separately.
It's a 4%. Do we, we're going to look back and see what kind of raises that position had received?
I know Leeann, the incumbent, is at the level that had been received by her predecessor who had received an increase just prior April.
That's correct.
Right, so.
And then she came in in November, I believe, at that rate.
Yeah.
And Leeann has, the existing town major has been in there three years now, right? Because she was just recently reelected, is that correct?
Leeann?
Yes.
Less than that.
Less than that.
She's been in that position.
Yeah, just a year ago, actually.
November.
Yeah.
Like a year and a half.
She was the assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah, because she was doing the unfilled term, wasn't it?
Right.
I think.
Right.
If I may speak, I just have one concern about this, and I think we're, one of the articles that we're discussing that we voted on already was to look into salaries for different positions around town. I'm sure that this will probably be a salary that we'd be comparing to other towns to get a baseline, if that, is that correct?
That would be correct.
So I'm just.
I will say that one of the things that some of the members of the Finance Committee did mention was the fact that the place, the office is rather understaffed and the Town Clerk puts in a lot more hours than perhaps another Town Clerk might have to under the similar circumstances, so just food for thought.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the budget for 2015, does that make, does that account for any additional staff in that Town Clerk's office?
No, no. It doesn't count for any new staff anywhere in any budget.
Can I ask another question? Does that budget, does the proposed budget for 2015 propose any, if not additional staff, salary increases beyond that which is from a union contract? Are there any other people, personnel on either the town side or on the school side that are not due an increase due to contractual obligations who are due to get a budget, to get a salary increase in this budget?
No, not outside of the collective bargaining process. The answer's no.
Okay, thank you.
So I just had a question. When was the last time this position received a raise?
I've been instructed that would have been a year.
About a year and a half ago.
A year and a half ago, so it would have been FY '13.
'13.
Correct.
Yeah.
And this would take effect in FY '15?
This would take effect July 1st.
July 1st?
Correct.
Is the, this raise?
I'm sorry.
I think it's FY '12.
I'm sorry, Dory thinks it was FY '12 that this salary was in place.
Was in place.
For Leeann's predecessor.
Yeah.
Is this, are these funds, the 2552, are they included in the budget money?
We did include in the worksheet, we did pull out, it's not in the budget itself, but it is in the budget worksheet, the budget projection, so if it's the vote of the public, there are funds in the projected budget right now to pay for that. I shouldn't say in the budget. If you add up the budget and the projected articles of about $42,000, that amount is contained in there in the event the town does vote for it.
Does the board want to act upon this or anything?
I would just prefer to wait till, what are we, on June 9th, right before? I just would like to get the exact year that this position last received a raise.
Is that agreeable to the rest of the board? Or does anybody want to make a motion?
It's fine, I mean, I would make a motion, but I would defer to Mr. Deion if we want to wait.
Okay, seeing nothing opposing that, then we can wait on that if that's agreeable. I think I'm remiss, I probably should have, since we have a large audience tonight, we probably would maybe get the chief up here to talk about, answer any questions we have. That's Article 26, which is to approve the debt authorization for, actually, what is the wording for 26? I want to make sure I get it right, because I think we had a little bit of discussion on that. Just so we don't have to make the chief wait. Oh, I don't know if I have it here. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds or borrow the amount of $1.2 million for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new aerial vehicle for the fire department or take any other action relative thereto by the fire chief. I know that Tom emailed, I encourage the members to email or contact Chief Nuttall with questions, and Tom made up for the lack of the other four of us and asked a lot of questions, so.
I saw some questions.
Okay, excellent.
Excellent.
Excellent, so I don't know if anybody before, Chief Nuttall speaks, does anybody want to ask any questions that maybe weren't covered?
I've heard some response.
I just think, generally speaking, the chief has covered a lot of ground. I don't know, I haven't seen our last meeting, again, it was taped, like I said, and I did send John some questions. He might want to touch over, there was a couple of things I wasn't aware of, quite frankly, with the vehicle. So, yeah, I mean, I think we're definitely going to have to have some conversations so the general public can understand what's going on.
Absolutely. Chief?
A couple of things. First, just for clarification, I think the wording of the article, I think it was stated to be spent up to $1.2 million, not necessarily the exact amount. By all means, if we can find a vehicle less than $1.2 million, we will. I'm not looking to just have a blank check of $1.2 million. We do need the flexibility and that ceiling height in the funding process that will allow us to be able to get the vehicle that we need without coming back to a further town meeting at a future date. I'm trying to try to extend this any longer than it happens. That's important. That's, the maximum ceiling would be up to $1.2 million. If we can, by all means, reduce that price in the process of doing the research, in writing the specs of the vehicle, we would. We would certainly try to reduce that if we could. Since I met with you, I think it was two weeks ago, I think, first of all, the board, as well as the community, has had a chance to digest some of the information I gave you, because I did give you a lot that night. You had to hear it. Since that time on my side, there have already been changes with the ladder truck as it is now. Today, the ladder truck went for the annual state safety inspection step that we all do, every vehicle that Commonwealth does, and that failed. That is scheduled every June, that was not done today specifically just to get it done. It's the first of June. We always get our vehicles done early. It did fail, it failed because of the crack. It failed because of not enough clearance between the tires and the top of the wheel wells. That is related to the truck, the crack of the frame, as well as to some of the springs that have broken on it. I do have a fairly comprehensive report. I did email some of the information to some of the members of the board stating the defects to this truck, beyond the crack, there were a number of defects on this truck. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you for the interest of time unless you want me to. There's about 32 separate defects. I believe seven of those are critical. Three condemned outright, five of them are critical if they're not repaired, they're not comparable to the ones with you. The other ones, the other remaining 27, whatever number it is, they're all costing repairs. It's a 26-year-old vehicle, it just occurred. Beyond that, another change that we've had, we've had, completely unrelated to this truck, we're just, in a busy month, we've had four separate structure fires in the last month. One of those structure fires, we were able to use our ladder truck ad. This is before we realized there was an issue. The last three structure fires, including one just last Thursday, we've had Rockland and Whitman coming with their aerial trucks to vent holes in the roof for us. Brockton is not available. The fire we had last Thursday actually went to a second alarm, not because it was a large fire, but just the nature of the conditions that we had, there was a live electrical meter that we could not put the fire out around it until the electricity was shut off to the building. A few other issues that we had, it went to a second alarm. In Abington, on the Abington Fire Department running card, which is a plan for all of the mutual aid that we receive in any fires that we have, in the second alarm, we also get two more engines and a ladder truck. First alarm, you get a ladder and two engines, the second alarm, you get an additional ladder. The reason we do that is because we need to get the ladder close to the building as soon as we can before the street is shut down with fire holes and trucks. Brockton is normally our ladder on the second alarm. Because of the issues, the city of Brockton is having with their ladders, they're down one ladder now. That leaves one ladder in full service for the city, they don't want to take that out of the city. I can't blame them, quite frankly. Now I'm looking at our next due ladder, the closest due ladder on the second alarm fire, is either Randolph or East Bridgewater. That's how it stands now, that's how it's going to be for about the next year. All of the surrounding towns immediately bordering Abington are giving us either a ladder or an engine, meaning depending on where the fire is currently in the District of Abington, you could sub the muster field up north of, that's the Rockland section, assuming Rockland's available, I will get a ladder from Rockland, but they cannot also give me an engine. They simply don't have the manpower. That means I get an engine from Whitman, Holbrook, Brockton, and Waymouth to do different tasks at the scene as well as covering the rest of the town. Those towns now have already committed, we've got their stuff. Now I'm going out in an outer ring of town. We have the towns of Avon, Yanson, Hanover, Randolph, East Bridgewater, these are some of the outer lying towns. It's actually easier for East Bridgewater to send the truck right up 18 on half the town, the other western half of town is coming from Randolph up 139. This is the reality we have now, because Abington's down a ladder as well as Brockton is down a ladder. Have to rewrite the running cuts. I did answer a number of questions the board emailed me throughout the weekend, very good questions. I know you're getting questions from residents, they're excellent questions, some of those we covered before, but again, it's, I think, more for clarification on some of the issues that we talked about. Again, the height, why do we need an aerial ladder in the 95 to 110 feet? It's not the height, again, it's the length, it's the reach of the truck, it's going over a front lawn, it's not necessarily because we have a skyscraper, we can use this on Green Street, and we have on some of the single-story homes, depending on how it's set back. What were some of the other questions? I'm trying to recall, if you had any.
Mostly about the station fitting the truck into the different sized stations.
Okay. Ideally, and this is my priority, is to try to strive to get a truck that will fit at Station 1 where it currently is housed now. That solves everything. That is easier said than done. The height of that, not only the door, but the ceiling I-beams as well, you can't raise a ceiling I-beam without lifting the entire roof, and we're talking a very costly measure to do something that, to be quite honest with you, when they widen Route 18, it's not the ideal location for that station, anyway. I have 10 feet 8 inches, most trucks are 11 feet. I'm not saying we can't get one, it is extremely difficult to get one. We have to have it manufactured to be reduced in height. As you know, I would like to get a tower truck. The buildings we have that we've constructed in town absolutely warrant that. I've had a lot of discussion with aerial chiefs, aerial retired chiefs on this. Abington, quite frankly, has been the topic of conversation with us throughout Plymouth and Norfolk counties, because we have absolutely built up our town to warrant that need, but we don't have the staffing for it. This is all part of the conversation that we're having internally with the fire department or town to see exactly what we're going to get. Again, this is why I'm requesting up to 1.2. If in fact, we find out that we don't need a tower, or it may not be the best thing, it would be considerably less than 1.2. I really don't want to do that, it would be a lot of things to be considered with that. But again, if we do go to a tower, if we're able to do it, I need that ceiling height for the funding ceiling for that. If an aerial goes to Station 2, a couple of things with this. First of all, it has to be a quint. Quint, again, meaning that it carries a fire pump, fire hose, and a water tank for first aid fire extinguishment, if you will. The tank usually has about 500 gallons of water, that is usually used up in two minutes. We're spraying about 200 gallons a minute. The reason I need both at Station 2, because if that truck is responding to a fire dead in the town, sometimes the best way to rescue people is simply putting the fire out, as opposed to laddering the building. We can't pick and choose which truck to take, I simply don't have room at that station, either an engine or a ladder. So number one, it's going to be a quint. There are ladders out there available now, I may be able to find, they're not quints. They won't fit at Station 1, and it will do me no good to have a dry fire truck at Station 2. The main issue with housing an aerial at Station 2 is that's also where the ambulance is located. If the ambulance is out of quarters, out of town at the hospital, or simply unavailable, I have nobody on duty to man that ladder truck now. We'd be relying on, you know, off-duty help, which the firefighters do come in to do that, but there is a time delay. The way the stations are structured and the room that we have between the two stations, we have three firefighters at Station 1 headquarters, we have two firefighter paramedics at Station 2, I really don't have the flexibility to move that. We have to consider, a forest fire truck is at Station 1, I need somebody left back to man that. That's usually, the fifth firefighter on duty crosshands three pieces of apparatus, sometimes four. A forest fire, the ladder truck, a spare engine, and the boat. There's no room for those at Station 2. It's not a simple feat of just moving one firefighter from Station 1 to Station 2. We just really don't have the manpower to do that, or the space even to try to put that apparatus there. If we had one central station, all those issues are solved. If we had four more firefighters, all those issues are solved. I know that funding really isn't realistic for that, but that's why I mentioned that two weeks ago.
So when you, let's say, order this truck, when you get the truck, will you have a plan in place, like this truck, I've ordered it, it's going to go in this station, we're going to shift some guys around, or, I mean, will you have a plan in place? Obviously, that must go into the way you're going to order the truck.
Yes, I've put together an aerial purchasing committee, just within the fire department right now, fire department members, a good cross-section of officers and firefighters currently working there, and quite frankly, right now, we're just waiting to see if we're going to get the funding for it. Before we do a lot of work on this, if there's no funding on this, or if this is put off, I don't want to waste their time as well as the vendor's time, because when the vendors get involved, and they will extensively, and they start drawing up the blueprints on these, measuring everything, we'd be physically bringing those model trucks to this town, model meaning an actual truck, but as a display to make sure it fits on the bridge on Central Street, I mean, there's a lot of considerations with this, not just fitting in our station. Make sure it can turn some of the streets off of Green Street up in the muster field. There's a lot to this. We would absolutely extensively be looking at that, as well as recent purchases from eastern Massachusetts, quite frankly, as to who purchased either a tower truck, what type of tower truck, who purchased an aerial truck, types. We want to make sure that this is not a very quick purchase, there is going to be time built into this. Really, that clock begins once we know we have funding for it.
I have a question that maybe, it may have kind of been touched upon, but now, I know you can lease cars, you can lease police cars, some states do that. Is there such a thing as leasing a fire truck? Like, I'm just letting this out there, not maybe on a permanent basis, but maybe we can lease one for six months or a year just to buy it as time. Is there such a thing as doing that?
Really would be a lease purchase, I believe.
I don't think that's what Mr. Coyle's talking about.
I'm aware of what you're talking about.
Okay.
The other issue is, I'm not opposed to, once we get funding for an actual ladder truck, a permanent ladder truck for the town of Abington, and we know that that's in the works, and it takes nine months to 11 months to get that in place, to order it, to outfit it, to train it with our members. If we are able to find a temporary truck in the meantime, until the real truck comes, that is something, if we're able to find one that would fit in the station, I would be looking at. I'm extremely hesitant to look to try to get a cheap truck quick, because I think we're going to be stuck with this forever. A cheap truck is going to have issues, it's cheap for a reason, somebody got rid of it for a reason. They're not going to give you a brand-new truck just to use, they just don't do that.
Well, that wasn't my question, did you buy a cheap truck? It was just, you know, to lease something new in the meantime, or if they, even if they did something like that, I don't know.
I don't believe they do.
Okay.
I have some questions, I already, I've gone over, I sent John some information, he was kind enough to return. Just the general, what is the cost to weld the truck, which, I know you don't have to go deeply into, if we welded it, it still wouldn't be certified, or we're not necessary. What does that cost, $150? I don't recall.
I'm trying to, it's not repairable, meaning, let me explain that, because I'm not trying to give a quick.
No, 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 I know you have a lot of issues, but I think that, there's a lot of talk out there from people, just, well, why can't we weld it? And I understand what you're saying, it's more than just the weld part of this truck, we have waterway issues.
Thank you.
You know, so what was the cost just to weld it, off the top of your head?
The initial costs that we were getting on this, we were looking just for the beam to try to, this is not welding the beam, this is replacing a new beam, you can't weld it. It's a double C-channel that's already bent and cracked, about a four-foot-long crack. The beam was about $10,000 if we could get the manufacturer to get that to us, but that was a ballpark we were getting, that did not include any labor. Altogether, we could be looking at about $180,000. To be quite frankly, it's not worth doing, I don't believe. I think there's going to be other issues that we're going to find. We have major hydraulic issues on this. We're still missing a critical component of the main waterway, which is the telescopic pipe that conveys water to the end of the aerial for spraying down on larger fires. It's an older truck, we can't get parts for this anymore, we're having trouble. We had to have the, all of the wheels and the tires replaced last year because we couldn't get the parts for the type of tire anymore, they had inner tube tires. We had to have, over a year ago, the radiator custom rebuilt, because you can't get the parts for that anymore. At some point.
I don't, I don't, you know, there's no doubt there's a lot of other issues, I just, to me, just to try to weld it, in my opinion, $180,000 to put in a 26-year-old frontline vehicle, it simply isn't worth it, so I just want to state that. Now, just some of the other questions. The cost between a tower truck or a regular aerial ladder, and would a regular aerial ladder in fact fit into the Station 2? Uh, Station 1, I'm sorry, Station 1.
Not necessarily. Even some of the aerials are 11 feet 1 inch, and again, our doors are 10 feet 8. I'm not saying it can't, there are some lower profile, it's, they're not necessarily quints, which, again, I mean, he's going to look at that.
The quint is, I didn't have it firm on the scene, and I appreciate your explanation, was quint has water capacity.
A quint is a.
Pumping capacity, and it actually carries water to the fire.
Correct. A quint is essentially a combination ladder truck, fire engine, pumping truck. It does, it does both.
And that's what we have now?
Correct.
Okay.
And the other thing, again, with this current ladder truck, I have zero confidence this aerial will ever be safe again. And I know I sent this to you, but just sort of public hears, it would be my, on my order that I would have to order anybody to climb this aerial, and I'm not going to risk injury or death on a firefighter or a civilian if we're trying to rescue them down this on a truck that's already six years past its operating life. I'm just not going to do that.
In a round number, what would be the cost difference between a straight aerial ladder and a tower?
It could be a difference of about $300,000, which is a considerable sum, I understand that. However, over the length of time of the payment on this, you know, I knew we were looking at 10, 20 years, whatever, it's a complete different truck. In my opinion, it's worth it. It's a complete different truck that gives us a lot more capabilities, as well as more capabilities that a small fire department, we simply don't have the manpower, it gives us more capabilities that we can do with a tower truck that you can't do with an aerial truck.
And the last question, would it, is it possible to order an aerial truck, order it in such a fashion that later on we could retrofit it to a tower?
No. It's going to be engineered, one or the other.
Yeah.
These are great questions, absolutely, and I'm sure you're hearing them, but, and I think it's healthy the community's having this conversation, because this is imperative, and it's a very large ticket item, I understand that. It's the ballpark we're in.
Thank you, John.
Maureen?
Just quickly, with the staff that you currently have, appropriately trained, can you manage this truck with the existing staff?
I believe we can. I do. I believe that we can.
Andy?
That was one of my questions. What type of warranty is given on these new vehicles?
Very good question. A lot of these, the warranties are built in from the manufacturer. There's a lifetime warranty on frames, there's, you know, a five to whatever year warranty on the drivetrain, you start to scale back on the transmission, the engine, the fire pump, or the aerial. Specifically, most of them are very close, because they're all competing with each other for the warranties. Either way, that is something that we'd be looking at and we'd be specing out when we try to purchase a new vehicle.
This might be more for Rick than you. How do we go about, if this is approved, how do we go about, does this go out for bid? Is it as far as purchasing the actual vehicle?
Well, as far as going out to bid, as I know the chief, it is the last time he was in here, mentioned that he was, if it was up to him, which a lot of it will be, he would prefer to look towards a vehicle that's not, that's on the state bid list, so you wouldn't have to go through the procurement process of designing this engine, which can take several months to go out and just to do the procurement documents itself and get replies. The beauty of the state bid list is you're able to go out immediately and talk to a manufacturer, knowing what it's, more or less what it's going to cost for the vehicle you've, that you've outlined, so. So I would suggest that the first thing to do is to identify the capabilities of the vehicle you want, and then go on this, find through the state bid list, find vendors who have those machines that meet those requirements, and effectively, there isn't much capacity to bid beyond that, playing vendors against each other, that doesn't, you really don't have that much of capacity to do that when you're dealing with the state bid list. So, which, again, that's the beauty of the state bid list, you do it quickly, but there's, it's not like you can, again, play vendors against each other, it really defeats the purpose of that.
Could I add something?
Please.
Thank you, Rick. And on that, and I agree with him 100% with his caveat, that in researching the type of vehicle we may be able to get, it could be possible that the only type of vehicle that would fit in our station is not on the state bid list, in which case we'd have to go to the normal procurement, putting it out to bid.
So how would that process go? You would look at the state bid list first, and then?
It would really be which vendor is able to offer us the correct truck for the town that would fit. And if they are on the state bid list, great, it makes it easy. If they're not, usually it's about a 30-day process to put it out to bid, it might be 45 altogether, but...
No, and that's before you even, that's after you've designed the bid document. That would, that's going to take time in itself to design the bid document, so you're talking about just the advertisement and the wood process.
Correct.
So you could probably add another, you know, 30 days to that at least.
And Tom?
Chief, I just want to get back, because when I asked you some of the questions today, I was under the impression, when this vehicle failed the state safety inspection, that with 32 defects found, two of which were severe, and I got the impression that it's their opinion that you can't repair this?
Yeah, I actually have, this is, it's a large document, but there's 32 failures on here. Two of them are critical, which means, unless you repair them, that, no, they're not even, this is a, these are simply items that if the vehicle meets this criteria, the vehicle's taken out of service, whether it's repairable or not. It's until you're able to repair it. That being said, the condition and the age of the vehicle really isn't feasible to repair it anyway. So if this was a brand-new vehicle, and it was in an accident, and these same defects were found, it would still be taken out of service. A brand-new vehicle, you may be able to repair it. It would be feasible to do that. This is a 26-year-old vehicle.
I guess what I'm driving at is, could you find somebody that would say you could repair it? You could spend the hundred, the $200,000 to repair it. I'm not saying that makes sense, and as I told you personally, it doesn't make sense to me, but as I also said, at least over the weekend, I ran into a big pocket of residents that sort of were dogmatic about, we could spend $100,000 and basically repair the frame.
But there's repairing the frame, and then there's trying to get an engineer to certify that this is going to be safe for the entire truck, and the use of the aerial. I don't believe you're going to find that, quite frankly.
Okay. And the other one you hit on was your first one here, but I heard rumors that this ladder truck was damaged up at the fire academy.
Yeah, I'd like to address that. I have no idea where this came from, but it, that's okay, I'll address it either way. First of all, the fire truck has never been to the fire academy. The fire academy's been stowed. I don't think the truck would make it to the fire academy and back, seriously. It's a great truck, don't get me wrong, when it was, but it's just not true. We have, the annual certification test on this was last done in the fall. It was fine then. We didn't do any training with it really since then. For the frame itself, it's just, it's simply not true.
All right. And I guess the last question is just in the formation of the article, how much latitude we have, not we, but town meeting has to, to change where it is. Because again, I think for residents, right now what we're saying is, basically, the article is to transfer from available funds or borrow the amount of 1.2 million dollars. And again, based on comments, I don't know if it's just wordsmithing, but up to 1.2 million dollars might be more appropriate, because I think there's a perception, once you put 1.2 in there, that's what we're going to spend. But my question is, I guess my comment is, this isn't necessarily going out for debt exclusion. It may, or it may not. It could be that you'd borrow from available funds, such as stabilization or other available funds, a portion of it go out to borrow, you know, how do you count for all those different, or do we need to at this point?
Well, the authorization to borrow is essentially to bond the vehicle for some period of time, whether it be 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years. If to transfer from available funds, that would be where you would maybe look towards a stabilization. You know, I'm not sure that, you know, when you've got about a 1.1 to 1.2 million dollar stabilization fund, I don't know how much people would feel comfortable offsetting that fund, you know, taking from that fund to offset the cost of this vehicle. As far as a debt exclusion, that's a discussion, a decision the board of selectmen can make at a later date as to whether or not you want to put this on a ballot to be excluded. That's not a decision that has to be made by town meeting, that's, unless you want to make it, put it on the warrant, or make somebody wishes to form a motion that makes this contingent upon a debt exclusion. So the motion is where you would, you would want to address any of those issues. But I guess my only concern is, while clearly I would prefer that this be done in the form of a debt exclusion, I'm not too sure that that can be done immediately, because I don't think that gives the town what it needs to work with to go to vendors and say, we do have authorization. But there's, there's no question, there's a gamble, that, to try to get, you know, $100,000 plus in debt service from the general fund over the, over a period of time, that there's a risk involved there.
But I think, simply said, the way this is structured, if voters or town meeting votes to approve Article 26...
Right.
We, being the town, is on the hook for up to 1.2 million dollars, so...
Correct.
If it goes out to debt exclusion and it fails, we're going to have to come back and figure out where we're going to find that in the budget. If, if we come back at a later date, and, you know, part of the recommendation is take some from stabilization, which requires a three-fourth vote...
Correct.
That fails, that causes problems.
Right.
So I think that is an important consideration here that people understand.
Yeah, I would agree. And on it, and I, to, I understand your point a little bit better, Tom. In essence, on an annual basis, the town could look to the stabilization account to fund the debt service on, on this particular item, would be how you would probably use stabilization over time to deal with, if you didn't feel it was available within the confines of the budget structure to begin with, so. But you're right, that would, that would really have to be, that would be a challenge after the fact, if it wasn't done right up front, contingent on a debt exclusion that was actually successful, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of, maybe a personal situation, you're going to go buy a vehicle, right? You've saved up, it's a $30,000 vehicle, you've got $15,000 in your savings, you're going to take that $15,000 and reduce the purchase price, in effect, to 15, and you're going to go borrow the rest. And then you're going to replenish what's in your savings account, a stabilization at some point in the future.
Yeah.
And that's really what I was going to get at.
No, that's, okay.
And I'm not suggesting that's what we should do, but there's a couple of moving pieces there. Stabilization requires three-fourths, right?
Two-thirds.
Town meeting, two-thirds.
Two-thirds, yeah.
And a debt exclusion is a simple majority, so, again, it is, as you've pointed out, it is a bit of a crapshoot here.
But a debt exclusion also requires a ballot.
No, I understand that.
Right, the vote, the vote to incur debt is a two-thirds vote, but the debt exclusion vote itself is a, is a, just simple majority, correct?
But isn't stabilization 75%?
It's two-thirds. Two-thirds, right.
You mentioned, we could use stabilization to fund the bond, and assuming we went out for 20 years, how much would roughly would we pay out of stabilization? I'm not suggesting this, but I'm just, I want to know the answer.
Well, the first, the first year, for instance, would be just a little bit over $100,000, according to the treasurer, who's done a 20-year, 20-year...
So it would roughly be about $100,000 for 20 years.
Right. And that would decline slowly over 20 years, but that's effectively what you'd be looking at in the early, early years of assuming a level principle, which is typical municipal borrowing.
But just to follow up on Mr. Franny's point, and again, I think after this, this information should be put up on the website as some sort of an FAQ or whatever, but I thought your team, Leo and Jack, did an excellent job, that if you look at that schedule, what was particularly appealing to me, is it showed where your property value was?
Yes.
And it would show you how much you'd have to pay. So on a 20-year sort of bonding, if you're at the average, which I think is 281,000, I think it was $10 or $12 per year.
Eighteen. It was about 18, I believe.
About 18 on 20? Okay, but anyway, it just didn't feel to me like a huge amount, and I would want taxpayers out there that, you know, are saying this is crazy, just to at least have that information, so they can make their own determination of whether it makes sense or not. But clearly, that document should be put up, and, you know...
Yeah, if, again, if that's the, if the board wishes for us to do that, we'd be happy to put up Leo's analysis on the website, I just...
I personally agree with Tom.
That's fine. I just, I just don't, I mean, obviously, one of the things that we're concerned with is we don't, like, for instance, recently, you had suggested that we put some of the CPA information up, but, you know, but we're obviously careful we don't put things up there that look like advocacy versus just pure information. So, so a debt schedule, projected debt schedule, I would agree, is purely informational, so, but, like, but like I said, I, as long as the board is okay with us doing that, we'd be happy to do that. I just wouldn't want to do that in a, in a sense that makes you think that there's some inappropriate activism going on in the town manager's office, that's all.
Do you have a recommendation as town manager?
My recommendation is that you, is that you vote to authorize the borrowing, and trust the people to, in good faith, vote to exclude this at a later date if you feel the need to do that. You have to trust the public on this. I don't think there's a, I don't think that there's a great value to delaying this, unfortunately. This is not an ideal situation, it's not one that we asked to be in, but it, we are here, and I wouldn't want to put this off to a later date. I do think the, you know, having the consensus of public officials, as was suggested, perhaps by having a, maybe rounding out the committee, the chief has already put together with some public officials from the selectman, finance committee, et cetera, would be helpful in ensuring public confidence. But in fact, but I don't think we shouldn't move forward with, with the, with the recommendation to authorize a borrowing.
Just a question. I was going to get back to that committee that you formed, you said you formed some sort of a committee chief or...
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. Internally, within the fire department, of some of the captains, some of the firefighters who have recently been through some of the training, the department mechanic, myself, the deputy chief, to get a really good cross-section of...
Do you feel, as far as expanding that, as Mr. LaFond just said, to other, you know, maybe a member of finance committee, Mr. LaFond or somebody from...
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that at all. Sure, just that way, there'd be some transparency, you guys can see what we're doing. We're going to be looking at this more of a, an operational standpoint from the fire department's side, as to exactly how are we going to be able to use this. You guys are more than welcome to be part of that. We'll educate you as we go. You already know what a quint is, you know what a tower is, but... And very quickly, and this ties this whole thing together, I think, just two very quick points. Number one, the maximum height the Abington Fire Department can get to now is 18 feet, period. That's all we have, that's our complete capability. Yes, we have mutual aid aerials coming in, assuming that they're available. The storm burst that we have during the thunderstorms, the blizzards, some of the hurricanes, most towns are on their own at that point. Those times, those are the times that have me nervous, because quite frankly, frankly, the maximum height we have is 18 feet. And that's from a 24-foot extension ladder that we carry on the, on the engines. The last time we've had that capability is probably the 1840s, just to kind of keep that in mind where we're at. And the other thing, because this is imperative, I think, to try to move this forward, is I had asked the chairman, respectfully, if there's any chance we could move this from Article 26, hopefully to one of the much earlier articles at town meeting, just in the event, if town meeting's getting late, if anybody questions the quorum, we know how, you know, sometimes this does occur, and we don't reconvene till the fall. We lost a lot of time on that. So I respectfully ask, because this is important, if that's possible, to move this earlier in the night.
But that's a moderated decision, isn't it?
And the town.
I think it's in the charter, if I'm asking. Yeah, the meeting has to make that decision.
Yeah, actually, John, I...
But we could, we could vote to make a recommendation to the moderator.
If you want, I mean, having been a moderator before, I'd almost leave it, because I think there's enough interest in this, and I think there's a lot of interest in this. People are concerned on both sides of the issue, that they'd come with this particular article. That's just my opinion.
I would also suggest that there's probably a lot of interest in Article 25 with regard to the zoning on, the zoning on marijuana dispensaries. So, I mean, there is some, I know there's some interest in a number of issues, but again, something that you can consider, though. Once again, it's something that the body has to vote to do at the recommend, upon recommendation, so give it some thought.
Anybody have anything else? Other questions?
No more questions.
Yeah, motions or anything?
I'd like to make a motion in regards to what the town manager spoke to, is, so we can allow them to move forward, would fund it with an idea. Could you repeat that, so we can put it in the file, please? If you remember.
I'll try. My recommendation was to, was to vote to authorize the borrowing of up to 1.2 million for this, for this vehicle, and leave for a later date the question as to whether or not you wish to put this out as a, as a debt exclusion.
And having said that, I just want to be very clear, that that is going to be studied by a committee here. It might not be the ladder that we're talking about with the bucket, it could be a straight aerial ladder, that's, fair to say, it's going to be a decision we're going to make, but would certainly keep everybody involved. I'd make that motion.
I'll second for discussion, but I guess my question, I'll come back, is, does that preclude us that if the chance came up, we had other available funds, that we could do some sort of a split with the available funds and to reduce the amount that they go out and borrow with?
Can I just add, I think this answers your question. The way the article's written, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available fund, and can you add "and/or borrow up to 1.2 million dollars"?
Well, the motion has to be specific, so I think what you would be doing now is you'd have to vote to authorize the borrowing. That doesn't preclude, for instance, the way, the way these work is what likely happened is the treasurer would, would short-term borrow this for a couple of years, until it's clear exactly how much needs to be expended. At that point, there may be other funds available that you wish to, to go to town meeting and ask be put towards this project, to either offset this, the full amount. So that's not a decision that we really have available today, but it, like, but the treasurer isn't going out on, on July 2nd in borrowing 1.2 million dollars. This is something, he'd probably be doing a permanent borrow, oh, permanent to, meaning a 20-year borrow, if that's where we end up, probably, you know, two, two years down the road from when there's that. So there is time to figure out the best approach, or combination of approaches, to, to, to put the funding together. Like, see, it's not the greatest situation to be in, but unfortunately, your, you know, your other option is just, is to wait, and see how some of these factors come together in the meantime.
Maureen?
Personally, I'm, I'm not comfortable waiting till then. I think if we can, if we can authorize the borrowing, and then, you know, go in and see what's available, how much it's really going to cost, in the meantime, you know, I'm comfortable myself with the treasurer, knowing what options are available, because, I mean, we've been through it before in other items. So personally, I'm okay with authorizing the borrowing, and then we'll see, as far as whether it's 20 years and it's bonding the whole thing, or at some point we have to go and do a debt exclusion, personally, I'm okay with giving that authorization to the collector.
The recent purchase of the ambulance, which is a completely different funding source, that is entirely funded by ambulance receipts, that is not taxpayer dollars, which is coming soon, we're hoping to get that this summer, the ambulance, that was purchased, a five-year lease purchase, I believe, was, and that's in arrears, meaning the first payment's not due for about a year until after we receive that, that vehicle. So this very well possibly could be a very similar circumstance, if it's a lease payment.
Somebody else have their hand up? No?
Do you have something?
I do, but you were recognized first.
He wants to drop the bomb.
Well, no, it's not bomb to drop, but again, I just, I'm looking for some wiggle room, that I don't know if we could authorize the town manager to solicit bids through the appropriate legal processes to replace said truck, either by purchase or lease purchase, said acquisition to be financed by a transfer of available funds, raising appropriate or borrowing, or a combination thereof, said financing to be determined at a later town meeting when delivery is imminent, or take any other action thereof. So again, I think the only difference is, I think what I'm hearing you say, Rick, is you want to borrow for it. You want to go out to the public and roll the dice and hope that they're going to approve a debt exclusion for up to 1.2 million dollars. And I'm saying that it may be premature at this point to do that, is to give yourself some wiggle room that, you know...
Well, what I'm suggesting is that the town provide the authorization to borrow Well, what I'm suggesting is that the town provide the authorization to borrow for the full amount of the vehicle. Whether or not it's done as a debt exclusion is a later decision by the town, if this board wishes to put that on the ballot. My concern is that I don't know that, in my experience, if you're not specific, very specific on authorizing an expenditure and how it's going to be expended, you're not going to be allowed to do it. It won't be a vote that has the weight of law. You know, you're not going to have a bond counsel authorize a borrowing that, well, maybe you'll borrow, maybe you won't borrow. You have to have an authorization. Now, that doesn't mean in, you know, FY '16 annual town meeting, when we know exactly how much it's going to cost, and the debt service would perhaps begin in FY '17, should we go out and do a 20-year borrow, that the town wouldn't perhaps look to offset the cost of that by putting $250,000 of stabilization towards the principal before the long-term borrow. But I just don't think that that's not a decision, I don't, that we're avail, that we're not able to make that decision today or next week, yet the project can't go forward without a definitive funding source. And the only definitive funding source that we can define right now, or next Monday night, is a borrowing. And, you know, a vote that is not specific enough to authorize an expenditure is not going to be of any value, I think.
So right now, you're saying, by definition, we're going to change Article 26 because it says from available funds or borrow the amount.
But I think he's...
It's a borrow.
The motion is going to have to be from...
Right, this...
...available funds or borrow. One or the other.
Right. The article is a fairly generically written article that provides different opportunities for funding.
And since you're saying borrowing up to, when it comes time to do the actual borrowing, we don't have to borrow the 1.2. We can...
You borrow what you have.
Your down payment in cash, you know, so to speak.
Again, that's a decision you...
You have the options.
That's a decision you won't have, you won't know, you won't have enough information to make that decision, probably for at least another year. But even if you're borrowing the funds, you'll probably have two years or so before you would do a permanent borrow, a 20-year borrow, because it would be, the project would be floated on short-term notes until you, it's clear exactly how much it's going to cost and exactly how much has to be financed.
I'd like to see, along with this, as part of an explanation at town meeting, to say, we would like to have a committee formed so that in the fall, we'll come back with some possible recommendations as to the complete funding. So in other words, you know, get some, you know, a selectman, a fireman, you know, some of the financial team to come up and say, these are the options, and present them before another town meeting, or just present them to, you know, these are the options, you know, decide, that sort of stuff. To further expand the picture, we're just saying, we want to borrow, but now in the fall, we can say, we want to, you know, put a down payment, we want to borrow this, we want a long-term, we want a short-term, we want a debt exclusion, and we want to pay for it out of, you know, a hundred thousand out of stabilization fund every year for the rest of our lives, you know?
Well, you can't make the decision to do that because you can't bind next year's town meeting to fund X amount out of stabilization. You can't do that. All you can do is commit the funds through a bond authorization. You can't tell town meeting in 2022 that it's going to spend $100,000 from stabilization, so, you know. But that doesn't mean the, a multitude of different options and the impacts of those options. For instance, it probably, I don't, I'm sure it wouldn't take Leo very long to determine that, you know, if the town put $300,000, like, say, call it a down payment, like you're down on a 1.2 million dollar vehicle, what would the result be in terms of debt service and the impact on the average household? I mean, those are things that could, would certainly be, you know, explored over several months. The question is, are you willing to put off the project for moving forward for that period of time?
Andy?
The committee that I was thinking, I think that's a good idea to do, but the one I'm more concerned with is to have people from the Finance Committee or a selectman member, Rick, involved in what's actually being purchased. The funding, that's going to be something that we, I think, it's the Selectmen, we have to make a proposition, a proposal as to how we want to get this done. If we had not run into this situation, in a year down the road, we said, we're going to buy a new fire truck, what would have been the process then, as opposed to how we're doing now? As far as going out for, getting the funding together, that's... I have a real problem with saying, we're going to borrow this money, and then maybe we're going to take some from stabilization, or maybe we're going to go to a debt exclusion, or maybe we're going to take it from within the budget. A number of years ago, when I first got on the board, there were three or four items that we had purchased, you remember the story, within the levy limit, and we ran into a real big budget situation. At that point in time, we said, what the heck, why did we ever do this? And we put it on for a debt exclusion. But my thought is, it's kind of playing a game here. I think, as a board, we have to make a determination. Is this something we're going to put within the levy limit? Is this something we're going to take some out of stabilization? Is it something we're going to put out for a debt exclusion? I think that is something, as this board, we need to make that determination. And I know we're in a rush here, I know it's something that needs to be done, and, but I just think the voters and the residents of Abington deserve that kind of proposal from us, as to how this is going, how we propose this is going to be funded. Because just to say we're going to borrow it, okay, great. And I understand your position, and I, believe me, I think you need the truck, there's no doubt about that. But it's just, I just want the voters to be comfortable with what we're going forward with here.
If I might...
Okay.
I think it's imperative, I mean, I have strong issues where it is a safety issue, and I also feel that we're more or less imposing on other towns by not moving as fast on this as we can. Mr. Burbine, all due respect, I think that the motion that we're saying right now, we're saying right now, we're going to make this motion, and I, you know, we're going to, we're going to put the ball in motion. We can't, we can't go for an election right now. We're going to see what happens. We're going to put the funding, we're going to get the exact figure for the truck, and then maybe at a later date, we're going to go for that debt exclusion. And that's what I'm more or less, as I understand your motion, is that we're going to start the process, we'll be able to get the price of the truck, and, you know, in a short period of time, we'll be able to, you know, find out exactly what it's going to cost. I understand we're under a lot of time constraints, but I do, I just have a strong feeling that we can't, we shouldn't wait.
And that's fine, Mike, but if that's the case, if we all think the best way to get this done is through a debt exclusion, then we ought to come out there and say it right now?
Out of the box?
Yes. How else are we going to fund?
You're saying it right now.
How else are we going to fund this? Are we going to fund it within the levy? As I said last week, that's not going to happen. There is no way it's going to happen.
Let me ask you a question in hindsight.
I agree with you.
If we go to the levy, I mean, we go and we put a debt exclusion on, and it doesn't pass, what do we do then? So what I'm saying is, we're going to...
Well, I guess, I'll answer your question. I guess what we do then is, then we have to take it out of the levy.
So what are we going to...
If the first shot out of the box is, we think we should go and do a debt exclusion for this particular item, then, or we ought to take some from stabilization and some for a debt exclusion, I think we need to have a proposal. I just don't think...
I think that, I don't know, maybe I'm missing it, but I think it is a proposal. We're going to take it out of available funds right now with an eye towards, once we get our feet in the ground, so we can explain to the taxpayer, and I trust the wisdom of town meeting, once they make, you know, good decisions, it's all, it's all our town, it isn't mine or yours or anybody's.
No, I agree.
I just think we'll be able to start the process, opposed to saying, we're going to borrow, we're going to go, you know, whatever, like, the time it takes to have a special town meeting, a town election, it's going to cost us time to get there, and then if it doesn't pass, then we're going to do it. Well, we've lost two or three months.
No, that's not the case, I don't think. We're still authorized to borrow. I'm just saying, if the way we think this ought to be funded is through a debt exclusion, then let's say we ought to do it through a debt exclusion. If the way we ought to do this is through stabilization in some other way, then let's develop a proposal so we can present it to the people who are going to be at town meeting and may ask that question. We're going to borrow this money, how are you going to pay for it? That's going to be a question.
Right, and I think Rick explained that we can borrow for 20 years, a hundred thousand dollars from stabilization, if we had to. I'm not suggesting that, but for the, just to get the ball rolling, the hundred thousand dollars this year, yeah, I think to get the ball rolling, and then we would look to have a debt exclusion. That's what I think we should do, but again, the wisdom of the board.
Well, keep in mind, if you're authorizing debt, you won't be paying $100,000 this year. You'll be paying $100,000 a year once the debt is issued, which could be another two years down the road before. But it's a dilemma, and everybody's right, that's the problem here. What's the, you know...
That's why I asked that question. If we had been able to plan for this, how would we go about it? Would we go, we wouldn't be going about it this way?
I agree with that.
No, you would probably be...
We'd be presenting something to...
We're not giving that lecture.
No, you would...
That doesn't mean you still can't present an idea at a town meeting, and even if it doesn't, at least they know this is the direction we're going.
Right. I think what we probably would have done was, was put it, was, again, explored it, had it voted as a, you know, contingent upon a debt exclusion. If the debt exclusion was passed, then the project would move forward. You're doing that, in theory, in an environment where you still have a piece of working apparatus. That's not the case right now, which is what complicates this significantly.
Tom?
Yeah, I just, the way I view it, Andy, is it's almost like an emergency expense. I think the vote on Article 26 is more endorsing that we feel, as a board, that we need to go out and purchase a new piece of equipment. I don't feel, as a board member, I have enough information to basically say we're going out with a debt exclusion, because from my vantage point, if we can avoid it, I want to avoid it. And I don't know. I don't know if there's going to be 1.1 million in the stabilization, you know, because we get free cash, we have the ability to control priorities, and there might be other available funds that would come up. So for me, I'm in a position that I've heard a lot of people out there that say we should repair it. I'm convinced that it's not repairable. And I would, you know, as a member of the board, endorse the chief and our management team here to go forward and start the process, and ask them, again, I agree with an independent board here with Finance Committee, maybe even residents, to kind of look at the finance, whether this is the right vehicle in conjunction with the fire chief, and come back at a later town meeting and basically say, this is how we think we should do it. But I don't think, to me, to try to earmark a particular funding source, and I do agree with you, typically, this would be put on the capital improvement plan, right, and we would have a funding source if we had more time and we knew the metrics of what our financing sources were. But I just don't see it, you know, one week, the town meeting, and, you know, we don't know where we're going to be in the fall, so on and so forth. So for me, my vote is going to be to endorse, you know, to go ahead and get the wheels in motion to get this vehicle, you know, purchased for the town, because it just does impress me as it's, it's a safety issue, and I'm convinced that it can't be, you know, repaired at this point, based on the information the chief has presented, an email, and tonight, you know, this public forum.
All right. Anything else to add, anyone? All right, we have a motion and a second to borrow up to 1.2 million dollars.
Recommend.
To recommend...
This is all just about a recommendation to town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To recommend borrowing up to 1.2 million dollars. That pretty much cut to the chase right there? Okay.
Wait, 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 wait. I mean, to borrow or take from available funds?
Not to borrow.
The motion has to be...
Up to.
It would be a motion to...
The Finance Committee will make the...
It was your motion.
Correct. The Finance Committee has approved this?
They have.
But they approve from available funds or borrow. You're saying it has to be one or the other?
Yeah.
So you are committing us to going out with a debt exclusion.
Right. That's our point.
We don't have to borrow the entire one.
No.
Let's say that somebody...
A borrowing is not, a borrowing in itself is not a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion has to be voted separately by the voters in the ballot box.
Authorizing...
All you're doing is authorizing, the risk you're taking is that you're authorizing money to be borrowed that may not have a dedicated alternative funding source, and the impact on the operating budget for a 20-year period of time could be significant. That's the risk. That's the risk.
So if some donor comes in and donates 1.2 million dollars for this fire truck...
That's a gift, and if...
Then we'll take that and buy the purchase, and we don't have to go out with a debt exclusion.
If we're going to go...
We wouldn't have to go out and borrow even, if that were the case.
What's that? We wouldn't have to borrow.
Even have to borrow. If somebody gifts money to the town for that purpose, we can use it.
So in effect, Andy's argument, you're identifying a funding source at this point in time, what we think...
Correct.
At this point in time.
Right, right. You have, I mean, you have, you can't, unless you're going to identify the exact funding source, you really can't move forward, you know, with the funding. You can't, I'm not sure how you could do that.
Can I speak on this real quick? My role right now, I'm a contractor. I just gave you bad news, your house is broken, you got to fix it. You guys are trying to work with a bank to pay for it. That's, I'm trying to back myself away from this. That being said, if this is voted as it is written, this, in my mind, and again, I could be wrong if my, if my opinion on this is wrong, please let me know, this gives the Fire Department or the town, the same thing, the green light to go ahead and begin to research, to spec, to order, and then to receive the truck. Once that is done, we're going to know exactly how much that vehicle cost. There's automatically built in, probably nine to 12 months into this process, at that point, you could come back next spring town meeting, or next fall town meeting, a year from now, and you're going to have a much clearer view exactly, when that bill is due, how exactly is the town going to pay for this? At that point, you could probably address whether it's going to be a debt exclusion for that, or where it's going to come from. Unless I'm wrong on this, that may be a very simplistic way to look at that, but...
However, you can't, we're not voting it the way it was written.
I would, well, you'd be voting, you'd be voting on a motion, a motion that's presented by the Finance Committee, and that motion's going to be to authorize debt, because there isn't going to be a recommendation to, next Monday, to transfer half a million dollars from stabilization. But as the chief said, you know, nothing precludes the town from coming back in a year or 18 months or two years, once it's, once this process is completed, you know exactly what the vehicle is, exactly what it costs, to ask, you know, to exclude that debt or to, again, seek other funds to offset the costs of debt. The problem is, is if you want to move forward, you have to move forward with a specific revenue source. You can't move, you can't move forward on a speculative source. You have to, you have to know, you know? It doesn't mean you can't change that later on, but an authorization has to be, has to be real and it has to be specific. It can't, it can't be, well, let's find out, we'll figure out later on how we're going to pay for it. It, you know, you could do that, but just, but that's not, there has to be a specific authorization for funding.
Authorization's going to be...
Right. You could come back and, you could come back in a year or 18 months...
Borrow the funds.
And ask to exclude the debt, the debt and interest. You could come back in a year and a half and ask town meeting to, you know, to appropriate or to transfer from stabilization, you know, $400,000 to offset the principal of the vehicle, but, but as of next Monday, if you're not comfortable providing a specific, you know, if the town meeting isn't, isn't comfortable authorizing a specific source to fund the vehicle, you can't move forward with anything but studying, really, other than studying, and I don't know how...
You can't, like the chief said, you wouldn't be able to spec it out, you wouldn't be able to order the vehicle, you wouldn't be able to do that.
It'd be hard to move...
I understand that.
Yeah.
So how did this article get put on there? Who looked at it before it got put on? Because I thought it was in proper form.
It is, it is.
Okay, but it says from available funds or, conjunctive or, one or the other, and what you're saying is...
It can't be and/or, like I...
Well, no, it can't, well, again, the article puts out the question, and then the motion, this is right from the lawyer's handbook, I didn't make this up, the motion seeks, the moderator's handbook, the motion seeks to answer the question. The article, articles generally, if you look through the warrant, tend to be generally written to provide different options to the town. And then the motion is the proposed answer to the question, that is, the warrant article itself.
Taking either, you're going to either transfer from available funds or borrow. The choice right now is...
Right.
Because it's not available funds.
Right. It could, usually, you know, you see the raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow. That tends to be...
Motion is always one of those...
Right. But clearly, they're-
We're going to, right here, we're going to transfer here, borrow here.
Right. So it's fairly generically written as an article, but the motion has to-
You don't think that will be kind of the third rail? And maybe weaken this article if you go before town meeting and say, "We're going to borrow up to 1.2," as opposed to saying there's three options here, available funds, borrow, or stabilization? We don't know yet. And we put a committee together to come back to you at a later town meeting to let you know. Because, you know, frankly, I could be wrong, and I hope I'm not, but if you go out in this environment right now, and again, I think there's a lot of people, when you say, "I'm going to borrow debt exclusion," they won't even listen. They're just going to cut you right off. And I think, to me, it just, it just seems to me that if you, if you put a stake in the ground and say you're going to go borrow, it means debt exclusion to people.
Well, then I think the other option is to, is to follow the lead of Mr. Burbine and do as much study and analysis upfront before you incur funds, and then come back at a later date and tell, and make a specific recommendation on that. Because short of that, we can't really, it's hard to have it both ways under these conditions that we're in right now. That's the dilemma.
My feeling is, if people know at town meeting, "We're going to borrow this money." Worst-case scenario, we're going to borrow 1.2 million dollars. Worst-case scenario, it's going to be $18 a year on your taxes if we go to a debt exclusion. And that's the worst-case scenario. That's fine. And I, honestly, I think that's where we're going to end up.
I, I would agree with you.
As long as people know that upfront, I'm not as concerned, and I'll probably vote to, because there is no other way to pay for this. It's got to be borrowed somewhere.
I disagree, Andy.
Let me just, let me just say this.
That's not the question today.
You know what?
Well, but it is, because again, I think-
Unless you're going to state a funding source, then-
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say, we're going to take 500,000 out of stabilization, like we did last year with the snow removal. And what the selectmen are going to do is enforce discipline that that will be paid back over so many years, three or four, five years. Because to me, stabilization is for that. It's for unforeseen circumstances. And to me, that's a better message to the voters than say, "We're going to borrow 1.2." It's sort of a 50-50. We've been putting money aside, okay? And now we're going to take that, and we're going to go and borrow the rest.
Now, if you're going to do that, Tom, you're going to take $750,000, because you just voted last week to take 250 out of there, again, for snow night, or whatever, for the budget. So we're going to be down to about $250,000 in the stabilization account, which is not a good place to do it.
I would not be inclined. I would not be inclined to vote for that. I'd rather put it up tomorrow and say, "1.2."
I think that the stabilization fund, we are very short. We're supposed to have well over $2 million in that stabilization fund to run as a town, okay? Again, we're going to borrow. I understand where the confusion is. I think it's going to be our job with the information we've gotten, and we're privy to a lot more information than the taxpayer, to explain that to town meeting. To say, "That's how, this is what our plan is. We want to get the ball going. We want to, we want to give the authority to the chief and this committee." And I think this committee is very important, and we should deal with that right after we deal with this, the makeup of that committee. They're going to be, and they're going to, it's going to be all done in a process, it's going to be reported out to the board of selectmen, but we need to get the ball rolling. And yes, we're probably going to come back at some point in time to ask you to seek that out of it. Not a special election, we could do it with something else, or do it in a regular election, but we're probably going to ask you to have a debt exclusion, to finish paying off what isn't being paid. That's fair. We have an emergency situation right now. And I think it's a little bit disrespectful to other towns if we don't start to respond as quickly as possible. And we're using our friendship with them to have them drive their trucks, pay the overtime that they have to incur. I don't think it's a fair situation, so I, I'm sorry, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't take money from the stabilization. I'd do with the motion that I made.
Which is to borrow.
Yeah. Ian, explain to the people. And I think, Andy, that's your concern.
It is.
All right. Anything further to add, anyone? So we have a motion and a second, and let me, let me get this straight, to recommend borrowing up to 1.2 million dollars.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, can we now deal with the makeup of that committee before we?
This is the committee that's going to look into what kind of vehicle we're getting? Or vehicle, or would it be the same committee, or will it be a separate committee? This is just my, or a separate committee for the funding?
Committee committees. I'd have one, I'd have one committee to vote. I mean, maybe not the fireman, probably, but you have the town manager, remember the board of selectmen, a finance committee member, I don't know if you want somebody a lot, you know, a resident. But that, again, would have to advertise and stuff. I think doing it more in-house, we could get that committee in place a lot quicker, is what I'm thinking. So, but again, it's up to the board.
Yeah, I don't care. Just build some stuff out there if you want. I mean-
Yeah, I'd ask the town manager to be part of it. I'd ask a member of the finance committee and a member of the board of selectmen. And, you know, that, yeah, that would probably be-
And this is to develop a plan for how to pay for it, or is this-
No, that would be a little bit of both, probably. But, and certainly, the committee that John has in place right now would all work together on this. That would be my motion.
I'm just curious, what committee this is? Is that, are we having two separate committees, or is this?
No, one committee. You have a committee, you have a committee right now that is going to look at purchasing a truck. They're going to design a truck, see what's best, see if it'll fit, and we're going to go over all that. At that point, we're going to come up with a cost, okay? And then from there on, I think, I think you yourself, maybe not the firefighters, be involved, but you, Rick, whoever on this committee, the finance committee, work with the treasurer, and come up with a plan on that.
So I just saw, so basically, you're talking a funding committee. I'm looking at the fire department operation committee, which I will handle purchasing what truck we need. Once that's done, then we kind of-
Yeah, but you'll, these members-
What we have, how do we want to-
I would like to, again, it's up to the committee. I would like to have the town manager, member of the board, selectman, member of the finance committee, be on with your committee.
I agree.
Make it one group.
It's fighters, the-
That's fine.
Purchasing of the-
Design and build, or whatever you want.
And what you're purchasing. And then the other, those other three, not including the fire department, the chief, I guess, could be involved, would be to-
Yeah, we want finance.
Figure out how to finance.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. And then the offshoot of that would be exactly what you said, Andy, to make a recommendation to the board to finance. And at that point, I think you'd be using the town accountant, perhaps the town treasurer and other venues, so.
As long as we're able to keep the committee manageable when we're, it's more than-
No. I, from what I've heard, you're talking about, member of the finance committee, member of the board of selectmen, and, and the town manager, in addition to whomever the chief has involved, or will involve over time.
Anybody volunteering to do it?
Well, I'll second this. I'll second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on that?
I would just question, when would you typically meet? Are you going to be meeting during the days? Would you be meeting at night?
Could be, probably mainly days.
Yeah. Okay. Rules me out.
Yeah, that rules me out, too. I mean, that's, could you meet in the evening just to get the-
Yeah, but with the vendors, if we're going to either vendors or other fire stations in the area, that's probably typically going to be day.
Yeah.
For that amount of money, they won't meet at night.
That's a good question, sort of, I like that.
I agree.
All right. So you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. So now, does anybody want to step up to do that?
Seemed interested.
I can't do it during the day. I just, you know?
I can do that during the day, yeah.
I don't want to do that.
Well, we're all the same, both. So pick one who worked the best and just try to-
I'm sure they'll try to make arrangements.
I don't want to, you know, it's tough enough to get over here for day meetings. If it was nights, it's a, uh-
I mean, I don't know how many meetings-
Early mornings, I don't know what time you start, or-
You might want to think about it, because we still have to solicit interest from finance, someone on the finance committee, too. So it's not like you'd walk out of here tonight knowing-
Okay.
What this is exactly going to look like. I will, I'm available during the days, though, chief, whatever you need.
And I want to thank you for-
Yes.
Being so open and honest. And I don't want you to take it the wrong way, because we're just trying to, you know, we hear a lot of stuff around town.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Future issues.
Real quick.
And it affects everybody, every resident in town, and your business owners, this is affecting right now.
Chupadice.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Do we want to, both to make up with that other committee, as far as the financing?
We did.
I thought we did.
That was it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're just an offshoot.
Okay. I was just handed some information, and we spoke about it earlier. Openings on committee, I think I read about, I listed the committees that were opening. There were two openings, vacancies in the park and rec commission. So we need to fill that. We'd fill that with a joint meeting between our board and the park and rec. How, what's the, is there a timeframe? Is that in the charter?
Are we sure of that? I'm not, yeah.
Yes, it's the, a joint, it's a total vote of a joint, joint meeting.
Right.
Right.
Now, do we have to post it for so, how long? Do you know how that works?
It's going to be posted for at least 10 days before you can make an appointment. And then I believe the appointment's supposed to take place within two weeks after the 10 days. So we can strategically work that around your meeting schedule, and whatever the park and rec meet also, we can take a look at that, so.
All right. So anybody out there in TV land, if you're interested in serving in the park and rec commission, perfect opportunity, don't have to spend money on a campaign, so. So just now, notify the town manager's office, the board of selectmen's office, probably fill out the form and let them know. Thank you. All right.
It's my name, so it's all right.
You're right. You were late, but we didn't do much before you got here.
Right.
All right. Other articles that we need to vote on, we will, Article 1, water department pension transfer, we held a vote on that.
Right. And the finance committee has recommended to pass over, for the reasons we previously discussed, concern over available funds.
I think our next recommendation, we, you know, motion that we recommend we pass over.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to pass over, and the reason being that we're sure of the fund balance in that account?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote to pass over.
Right. And Mr. Chairman, the other two articles that I have, as not having been acted upon yet, is Articles 11 and 12, one of the Community Preservation Act, and then the acceptance of the roadways.
Mm-hmm. Okay. CPA, Community Preservation Act. The finance committee has voted to pass over that. We had a very informative guest speaker at our last meeting that described some of the pros of the Community Preservation Act. They want, I believe, 1.5% of your taxes into that fund. Any discussion on that?
I, well, I thought it was various amounts that you could put in, all the way down, 0.25% wasn't necessary. Is that what the article reads?
The article is 1.5.
The petition article says 1.5.
1.5 is the petition article.
I don't think right now, yeah, okay.
All in favor of the motion, so we can discuss it?
Well, we can- It certainly has its merits. There's no doubt about that, but I just don't think this is the year to be doing it, only because of the school, maybe the, maybe the fire trucks. Isn't there one other thing?
The dump.
Oh, and the dump. Potentially, yeah.
I agree with you, Andy.
I know the proponents said, "Oh, it's only a little bit." But a little bit on top of a little bit, on top of a little bit becomes a lot. And there is a breaking point where people just say, "The heck with it, I'm not, I'm not going to be for this."
Yeah, I, I think that's something I've had an interest in, obviously, but if it was a lesser amount, but I don't think that's within the scope of the article. It says 1.5. That's fine.
I know I personally would prefer not to take up this at this time, but certainly